Good evening and welcome to the November 25 Beaver Creek City Council Meeting. Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Littrell.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz. Vice Mayor Bales.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Move to approve of absence of Councilmember Schwartz.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Schwartz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Vice Mayor Bales, turn it over to you.
If you could join me in the pledge of allegiance and a short prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we gather on gratitude during this season of Thanksgiving, we pause to reflect on the many blessings we have as residents of Beaver Creek. We celebrate the beauty of our city, the parks, neighborhoods, and gathering spots where our friendships flourishes and families grow. We are grateful for all the residents who call Beaver Creek home, for their spirit of collaboration, kindness, and sense of community that continues to make our city strong. We give thanks for those who serve our community, our first responders, teachers, volunteers, and public servants who dedicate their time and talents to bettering the lives of others. As we celebrate this season, let us carry a spirit of gratitude and generosity, remembering to lift up those in need and strengthen the bonds that make Beaver Creek a special place to live. On behalf of our entire city council, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Agenda before us, any changes, updates?
Move to approve the agenda, your honor. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we have a set of minutes from November 12th to 2025, regular meeting minutes. Any additions, corrections?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from November 12th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Very good. Thank you, I'm sorry. Public hearing, PUD 0601, SSP.
PUD 06-1, SSP number two, an application filed by Yolo Development One LLC, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard, Suite 500, Beaver Creek, Ohio. The applicant requests a specific site plan to allow for the construction of a 44,000-square-foot office building on 4.82 acres. The property is located at the southwest corner of Colonel Glenn Highway and East Side Drive, further described as Book One, Page Two, Parcel 25 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Do we have an applicant present? Please come forward, state your name and address for us.
Good evening, thank you, everyone. I'm Tim Parker, here on behalf of the applicant, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard, Beaver Creek. Project's pretty straightforward, keep it pretty brief. We are requesting approval for a two-story, 44,000-square-foot office building on 4.82 acres. It's on Colonel Glenn Highway and East Side Drive. And with that, I don't have any comments at the moment. I understand Planning Department will provide a more in-depth summary. Happy to answer any initial questions or address anything after their presentation. Thank you.
Burkett?
Good morning, Mayor, members of city council. The case you have before you is PUD 061, it's specific site plan number two for this particular PUD. Again, the applicant's requesting approval of a site plan to allow for a 44,000-square-foot office building on about 4.8 acres. The project's up in northern Beaver Creek, it's on the south side of Colonel Glenn Highway, just west of where East Side Drive intersects with Colonel Glenn. On this aerial photo, you can see on the far left of the page, far left of the screen is where Sheetz Gas Station is recently opened. To the east is a office building, and the 4.8 acres here is encircled in red on this slide. To the north is a salon and a vacant commercial space. To the immediate west is a R1A, single-family residence. It's kind of tucked in between a bunch of office development. To the south is vacant, and again, to the east is another office building. This is the proposed site plan that they're, they submitted with their application. You can see, I've highlighted the building in orange. To the north and to the east and south of the building is approximately 148 parking spaces, based on a calculation of one parking space for every 300 square foot. And then you subtract hallways and restrooms and elevator shaft and all that from the square footage, they are required to have 125 parking spaces, so they meet that minimum requirement for off-street parking spaces. They show two access points to the site with the primary access being off of East Side Drive and a right-in, right-out access point being located off of Colonel Glenn Highway. There's a traffic signal at East Side and Colonel Glenn, so they will, using the access point on East Side Drive, they'll be, they'll have access to that traffic signal. To the south of the parking lot is a, it's kind of colored it in darker green, but it's actually a retention pond, it'll be a wet pond. So there's a requirement that they have aeration devices, because this is, that pond is much lower than the parking field, so it'd be a lot of water going into the pond, and we want to make sure it doesn't create like a moss situation where it has a bunch of moss growing and our cattails, things like that. So the fountain or an aeration device will keep that water churning and less prone to have the moss growth. The building itself is about 137 feet long, about 160 feet wide, where the long section is parallel to Colonel Glenn Highway. To the top of the parapet wall is about 33 feet. The building is made majority, a majority of the building is a dark brown brick, and then it has ephesus accent features, like a light color ephesus accent, and then some dark brown brick around the entrances. This is just another picture of the building. You can see it's got the four-sided architectural features, they wrap around all four sides of the building. Their landscape plan, they do show a lot of landscaping around the site, as typical we've seen with this developer, they've got dozens, dozens of sites around the city, and they do a very good job of landscaping the site. So you can see landscaping all along the perimeter of the building, and around the perimeter of the parking lots, and inside the parking field. So no concerns with the proposed landscaping. Just a few of the conditions in the proposed motion for your consideration. One is, this is within the impact fee district, so the impact fees will be required and be required to be paid prior to the release of a zoning permit. Also, again, the fountains and aeration devices. In terms of signage, they don't have a particular tenant in mind at this time, so we gave, there was a proposed condition, and Planning Commission agreed with it, that they're allowed to have 200 square feet of wall signage on each of the elevations. And also, being that, you know, as, as a commercial site, and in addition, when you start adding up all the commercial sites, we want to make sure that they meet all of our lighting project requirements, so that when they are closed, they do have to reduce that lighting down to 25% for security purposes. But then use, also useful cutoff fixtures, so you don't get that light pollution that you can see with the kind of order-style fixtures. Also, a requirement that the poles all be in perimeter islands or landscape islands, we've seen on some parking fields where they, you get them in the corner of four spaces, and then those get dinged up, and you lose two feet of parking on each of the four spaces. So there's that requirement that they all be within landscape islands. Staff does recommend approval, we went to Planning Commission with this earlier this month, and they recommended approval. There's 17 conditions in the motion, and those are the same conditions that are found in the Planning Commission resolution. But again, we recommend approval, and we'll be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to speak to council on this subject, please step forward, give your name and address. Was there any written input or emails? Debbie? Was there any written input?
Yeah.
No. All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing, council. Any input?
Mayor, I'd like to thank the applicant for the investment in Beaver Creek, and for Planning Commission for always doing a lot of heavy lifting for us. Mr. Burkett, any plans for the west or southwest of the building, any future expansion plans or anything of that nature that you can say at this moment?
I don't have, unfortunately, I don't have the graphic on it, but really, the grading on either side, when you get south of that parking field on the south, and when you're west of the building, it drops off quite rapidly. So with the grading, there's no anticipation of development in the future on this.
Thank you.
Could I add on to that? Could you go back to the very first aerial that you showed?
Yeah.
That's good. So this gets, this drops off significantly, and so you don't anticipate any building down here?
Never is a long time, but with the, just looking at the grading, I mean, that's what their pond is going to go north, well, in the, I guess, the south portion of that red box. And when you get down to there, below that, it really drops off to the highway. And there's a, I believe, a creek that runs, you can kind of see it in the aerial that runs east and west.
If there were to be access to that lower part, would it be from the roundabout area?
If, in the future that ever develops, there, I mean, East Side Drive is a public street, and so if warranted, it would be as part of the impact fee fund, and the reason that fund is there, exists is so that should we need to develop and extend future public roadways, that would be part of it. So they could access off of East Side Drive or access off of Ashford Center, the circle down there on the, on the south, that's a private drive. So, you know, we are obligated to provide public access to them, should they need it in the future. But there's no anticipation, there's no anticipation of development on that southern portion at this time.
Okay. Anyone else?
I propose a motion to move for the purpose of taking administrative action approval for a specific site plan for PUD 06-1, Project Kona, on the basis that city council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials satisfies the standards and criteria set forth in Section 158.080, Standards and Criteria for AZRA, approval of the Beaver Creek Zoning Code. I further move that the motion, with all conditions, be fully recorded in the minutes of this council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the specific site plan for PUD 06-1. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Go build your building.
I think it's as pretty as all the other ones.
Thank you, sir.
Public hearing, PUD 0606, specific site plan.
PUD 06-6, SSP number five, an application filed by Woodard Development, 601 East Third Street, Suite 200, Dayton, Ohio. The applicant requests specific site plan approval to allow for the construction of a three-story, 82,500-square-foot office building, office and research facility, and a two-story, 55,000-square-foot office and research facility on 10.99 acres. The property is located on the east side of Mission Point Boulevard, approximately 200 feet south of Colonel Glenn Highway, further described as Book One, Page Three, Part of Parcel Two on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
See applicant present?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Jason Woodard, Woodard Development, here is the applicant. I don't have a presentation, so I'm not redundant with staff, but did want to point out that you were gracious to approve pretty much this exact application a few years ago, that we did not get constructed, so we're back again to give it another go and hope that we get it done this time. So with that, I will be here for any questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Burkett?
Yes, thank you. This is PUD 06-6, and this is the fifth specific site plan for this PUD. Again, the applicant's requesting to build about 137,000 square foot of office building on about 11 acres. This is split up into two buildings, a three-story building and a two-story building. This property's on the far northwest corner of Beaver Creek, on the other side of 675 at Mission Point. Currently, Mission Point has one building, it's 94,000 square feet of the PUD, and over a million square feet of square footage was approved, so they're well under what was approved and well within the limits of what they're allowed to build on the site. The 11 acres is represented by the blue box here, you can see on the screen, so it's just south of the township, or the township-city boundary, and has frontage all along Mission Point Boulevard, which is the public street. Again, this property's part of the, of the larger PUD 06-6, and is surrounded by 06-6 as well. To the south is vacant, to the east is vacant, to the west is vacant, and to the north is also vacant, and is outside of the city and the township owned by Wright Patterson Air Force Base and US Military. Seen here is the proposed site plan. You can see the two buildings, the building on the north, maybe this makes it, this makes it a little bit easier to see, the building on the north is the three-story building, the building on the south is the two-story building. There's one proposed access drive, a private access drive, which will go to the, to the east and connect to the north-south private connector, north to the three-story building, south to the two-story building. Out in front, along Mission Point Boulevard, is two retention ponds, those are, again, as with the previous application, there, it's going to be a wet pond, so there's a condition that requires the fountain aeration devices. One condition that is added, based on comments from the Planning Commission, but also from the fire department, from a safety standpoint, is, you can see that the parking field here with the slash marks in it, that's, that denotes a future parking area. However, the fire department wanted a secondary access point from the public roadway, and so a condition was added that that be constructed with this application, so they're going to construct an access point, and show that on the final plans, should this be approved by city council when they move forward with a zoning permit. They meet all the parking requirements set forth in the zoning code. They're required to have 390 based on the square footage if this was a 100% office base. They showed 387 with 26 additional in that reserved area. They'll lose a couple with the access point, but staff has no concerns with them meeting the minimum requirements for off-street parking with this application. Get to it here. Here we go. Seen here is the three-story building, and the two-story building has the same architectural features, which is gray brick and ephesus, with the gray ephesus entry feature on each of the, each of the fronts of the two buildings. Again, this is the two-story building. And you notice on each of the two buildings, on, for this one, it's on the, the side elevation, so for the three-story building, it will be on the, the west elevation, and on the two-story building, it'll be on the southern elevation. You can show the, you can see they show these overhead doors, and that's because, again, there's potential for some lab space, and so some minimal amount of delivery. And if they go with a tenant that's not a lab, then those would just be, those would match the other side of the building, and you can see, so it'd be the east side and the north side of the buildings, where they have the windows rather than the overhead doors. Planning Commission reviewed this application in, in earlier this month and recommended approval. You can see the ample amount of landscaping all throughout the site, again, this developer's also had several buildings in the city, and we've had no concern with the landscaping that they put in. A few of the conditions with this one is that no temporary signs will be permitted. Also, because the lot is one larger lot and not split out, they're going to have to go through the final subdivision, which is one Planning Commission meeting to review the property lines and any of the easements. And they're limited to 300 square feet of office, or 300 square feet of wall signage, sorry, on, on the long elevations of either the two buildings. They're slightly bigger buildings than the previous application, so their, their square footage of signage is a little bit more. But they're not, not allowed to exceed 75 square feet on any of the elevations, so their total can be 300 on the long and 150 on the short, and no more than 75 on each one. Now, there are 19 conditions in your motion for consideration. Again, Planning Commission and staff recommend approval, and we'll be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone would like to come forward and speak to this, please do so. Was there any written input on this one? No? Okay. With that, I'll close the public portion, and council, anything to?
I do, Mayor, with the vice mayor here. Mr. Burkett, any changes since 2021? I mean, I voted to approve it back then, just?
No, I mean, there might have been a few measurement changes here or there, but essentially, 99.99% of the application's the same.
With a proposed tenant, is there any plan of hosting major events or conferences that might require the full number of parking space? I know there are only three shy, and that doesn't concern me, but hypothetically, if there's a company that has major conferences, et cetera, getting across streets, parking could be of concern, any?
They didn't, they haven't indicated that they would have anything above and beyond what a normal office building would have, any other office in the city. They didn't have, they don't have, or didn't indicate that they have any large conference rooms or, or anything like that, just typical meeting spaces. Thank you.
Mr. Woodard, I just wanted to thank you. Again, I think I thanked you a few years back for this. It's nice to see that Beaver Creek is still a wonderful destination for businesses that require beautiful developments like yours, so I appreciate it and look forward to seeing it get built this time.
Anyone else? Have a motion?
I move for the purpose of taking administrative action, approval of a specific site plan for PUD, PUD 06/6, specific site plan number five, on the basis that city council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials satisfy the standards and criteria set forth in Section 158.066, approval procedures specific for specific site plan of the Beaver Creek Zoning Code. I further move that this motion, with all of the following conditions, there are 19, be fully recorded in the minutes of this council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the specific site plan for PUD 06-6. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And again, Mr. Woodard, thank you. You guys always do a great job with the buildings you build, so. Ordinances for resolutions and PUDs, ordinance 24-39, this is second reading.
Ordinance 24-39, an ordinance by the Beaver Creek City Council establishing the Environmental Advisory Committee.
No changes, your honor.
All right.
Move to approve ordinance 24-39.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 24-39. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 24-40.
Ordinance 24-40, an ordinance repealing current personnel rules and regulations for the city of Beaver Creek and adopting new personnel rules and regulations for the city of Beaver Creek.
And again, this is a second reading, so any changes?
No, no changes, Mayor.
Move to approve 24-40, your honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 24-40. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Ordinance 24-41.
Ordinance 24-41, to approve supplemental appropriations and authorize an inter-fund advance for fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2024, and to amend ordinance 24-31, 24-28, 24-20, 24-11, 24-09, 24-06, and 23-36.
Thank you. For your consideration, we have two items. The first is an $88,000 advance that we're looking for authorization for. The intent is, is that the grant money from the state for the body camera grant will be in by year end, but just in case it is not, we would like that authority to ensure that the cash balance of that fund isn't negative at year end, which of course would be a compliance issue. The other item is a $50,000 appropriation within the District One impact fee. This was a result of a 2020, or yeah, 2023 encumbrance being closed, and of course, that doesn't go back into your budget, so when it was re-appropriated, we just need that additional authority within the 2024 year. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is a public, this is an ordinance, so if there's any public input, we'll welcome that at this point. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion. And council, anything, any questions? Have a motion? Yeah.
Motion to approve 24-41.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 24-41. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Councilmember Littrell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Adams.
Yes.
All right. Unless there's something else that I'm missing, it's time for council time. That was good. Let's go with Councilman Littrell.
Oh, thank you. I, thanks for the excuse over the last, I guess I did make it to one of the budget meetings, but I was out of town. I was unable to attend really much of anything over the, since we were here last time, because I was not here, so I'm going to yield my time to rest of council.
We're glad you're back.
Thanks.
Councilman Kern.
Thank you, your honor. First of all, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and as Vice Mayor Bales presented, much to be thankful for in our country and in our Beaver Creek community. Secondly, I attended the date and weight loss opening, which was very interesting. Dr. Judson and his staff were very hospitable in explaining what takes place there, and a lot of WHIO folks testifying to the effect of great weight loss. Yeah. Attended the senior citizen lunch today, their Thanksgiving lunch, it was fantastic. The staff did a great job, and I think everybody really enjoyed the whole activity. And lastly, I think I mentioned, of course, the Wright State Air Force Academy event coming up this Friday. And Saturday. With a game on Saturday, and we want to encourage, as they're already on TV and radio, encourage more people to come to the game on Saturday evening at Nutter Center. So we want to see that, great support come out for Wright State. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Councilman Garcia.
Thank you. There's going to be some competing colleges on Saturday, it sounds like. It's not just beat that team up north week, but UDs, congratulations to the UD men soccer team for winning the second round of the tournament, shutting out that team up north 2-0 last night. That was a really great thing to see. They were at capacity, at 2,513 for record attendance, so that's great for UD men soccer. Otherwise, I just, in the spirit of being grateful, thank you so much to our staff for putting together all of these presentations for us. A lot of us don't ask that many questions, I know I didn't ask any questions tonight, but it's mainly because I feel like they can anticipate the questions that we're going to ask and put the information in there for us. So you've done really a great job. I appreciate all of that. And otherwise, I apologize, I will not be here at the next meeting, I have to travel for work, so I hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving and a great Christmas, and I look forward to seeing everybody soon.
Thank you very much. Councilman Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. Alongside yourself and Vice Mayor Bales, really great ribbon cutting for Hope Bridge Autism Center, an excellent addition to the Beaver Creek community, and really for families with a child on the autism spectrum, really a wonderful one-stop location with so many different services from PT to OT. services from PT to OT. I was very, very impressed, and a great ownership group, I believe 11 different centers across the tri-state area from Ohio into Kentucky and Indiana, and just a really wonderful addition to our community. Very thankful for them. Alongside Mayor Adams and Mr. Chris McClure of the Beaver Creek Chamber of Commerce, we had, I think, an amazing time with the third graders at Shaw Elementary. Mayor Adams, he spent, I don't know, close to half an hour just answering question after question. He was like the Pied Piper in the middle of the school assembly, and I was very impressed, Mayor, you answered all kinds of questions, yeah.
There were actually some good questions there.
I mean, when you look through the eyes, the community through different eyes, you get different questions, and it's always good for me. I had a great chance to present myself and learn some things from Mr. McClure as well, so thanks for doing that. And also neat to see an opening of a new business. For those of you that know me, I like running, but one of the reasons I like running is so I can eat donuts. And it's glazed donut eatery. I've enjoyed the Xenia location on a number of occasions, and to have one in Beaver Creek now is a nice addition. I think you went to the opening, Mayor, but I had a chance to go to that, too. So, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Bales.
Thank you, Mayor. I will continue on this amazing accolades for all of the businesses that are opening in town. It seems like all of us have been out and about cutting ribbons, and so kudos to the Chamber of Commerce for, A, doing those ribbon cuttings and organizing them, but it's just nice to see so many businesses. I, too, attended the ribbon cutting for Hope Bridge Autism, and I'd like to welcome glazed donuts. And also, toasted brunch bar and cafe opened a few weeks ago. The ribbon cutting was last week. And then also, I was at the Dayton Weight Loss Secret ribbon cutting, so a lot in the last couple of weeks, getting ramped up in Beaver Creek. I wanted to take just a second to thank the few public that came out for our budget work sessions. It's a really open opportunity to get a great look into the finances of our city, and so those who came out and participated, thank you, and I would encourage anyone else to do so. We're an open book with our finances, and I would welcome anyone to ask us any questions. I do have an update on the Green County sanitary softening project. They did get some, they do have some delays they were experiencing, and they had given us an update that said they were going to phase these softening in over the last three months or so. They expect to begin that in January, so it's coming, but at the meeting I was at last week, due to some unforeseen issues, they're going to start that process in January. With that, I'd like to just wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. Well, I won't go over the same things that we have all attended, but I will say that I was really impressed with the Hope Bridge Autism Center. They offer a 360 treatment plan, like Councilman Duer said, they treat everything. The really thing that I liked the best about it was you can leave your child there for a half a day or a day and go to work, and they'll make sure all those appointments are taken care of, so that they don't, you don't have to take off work to go take them to an appointment, so it's all done right there. I was able to attend the Beaver Creek Chamber of Commerce Annual Awards Meeting at the Hope Hotel. There were several people that received awards, including former Mayor Brian Jarvis, who got the Military Award from the Chamber, and then, oh, the toasted brunch bar and café, that was, that's well worth it. If you have the opportunity, go try it. I had their toasted bacon, and I better not go back for that.
How big were those cinnamon rolls?
Oh, my goodness. They filled a plate, which is huge. And they're really, the pricing is really good, so I would recommend trying it. With that, I'll just wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. I know this holiday season is a time when we get a little bit caught up in things and try to rush around and do things, but try to take some time and just, as I used to say, stop and smell the roses. I mean, it's a great time of year to do that. But with that, just the staff, thank you so much for all you've done. I mean, all of us up here have said it many times, but you guys help us out a lot. I mean, you really do, and we're really, really fortunate to have the staff that we have here in Beaver Creek. We have a question that's usually answered before we can even come up with it, so that's, from my standpoint, that's, thank you very much. That's all I have. Mr. Landor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, did with my family, the day before the ribbon cutting, checked out toast. That was delicious. That's dangerous there, that's for sure. I first want to thank staff for stepping up during my very difficult time of passing on my father. It's been the roughest time I've had in my life, now that all my parents and grandparents are deceased. It's a difficult time, but staff I didn't have to worry about. Monica, thank her particularly for stepping up, but each department head, as I told Monica, don't worry about it. The department heads, they know their budgets, and as they did. So I just wanted to give a shout out to them. I appreciate it. Also, thank you for the support, Mayor. Thank you for attending, and the department heads, the show of support was tremendous, the flowers that were sent, the emails, texts, all the things from council. Thank you. It did mean a lot to me. As anybody knows that's lost a parent, especially the last one, this is just the beginning of the journey that we face, the first Thanksgiving, first Christmas, and cleanup of everything else that there is to have to do, so. But thank you. I just wanted to say, we even had, I got to give a shout out, Walter and Denise Chin came to the viewing. I couldn't believe it. So residents, thank you for their support. That, I was like, what are you guys doing here? They're like our number one and number two volunteers, but still, you know, that meant a lot to me, so thank you. Tonight, real quick, a lot going on still. Yes, our offices are closed on Thursday and Fridays, so for Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Again, be safe while traveling, number one, travel, one of the number one holiday travels, so please be careful, and for non-emergencies, please contact 426-1225, and of course, for emergency, 911. State of the City, next council meeting, December 9th. Encourage everybody to watch, see what the State of the City, as we'll have that and a special video as well, that the accomplishments from 2024. We've done a lot this year, so let's, we'll be highlighting that that night. Coffee with the Cop is this Wednesday, so before you, or not this Wednesday, this Wednesday after Thanksgiving, so maybe have some coffee with the cops on December 4th, 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. at Target, 2490 North Fairfield Road. So just, you know, have a chat with them. The last one we had was very well-attended, so come out and ask questions, share concerns, and it's free and open to the public, so come have a cup of coffee with the cops on December 4th at Target. A very, very fun and exciting time that we have, a winter welcome at Wardinger Park. I mean, we have Santa, as you see, that comes, the, most of the cabins are decorated, from the Optimist to the Lions Club to the, I'm going to forget when I start, Kiwanis and Green County Library, and I think Rotary is doing something this year as well.
Right.
So a very fun time. There's hot chocolate, cookies, all kinds of stuff, and the kids love it, all the lights are lit up on the cabins and the walkways. I think reindeer will be there, a sleigh for pictures, and there'll probably be a food truck or so that's there for hot drinks and beverages as well. So please come out, join us on Friday, December 13th, 5:00 to 9:00, at Wardinger Park. You know, we're trying this because we've found out we always end up getting too late in the game, so to speak, as people line up jobs for the summer. So we're going to try this in December, a Summer Expo, December 19th, at 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Golf Club, Beaver Creek Golf Club. Please come out, we're accepting applications. We are, do have some full-time, but part-time, but specifically seasonal positions as well, paid student interns and various departments, for various departments. So bring your resume, be prepared for an onsite interview. So that's December 19th, 1:00 to 5:00, at Beaver Creek Golf Club. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. Now time for citizen comments. If anyone would like to address council on any issue, please come forward, state your name and address. You're the citizen today. All right, with that, we'll close that part of it, and I think we have a motion here.
Mr. Mayor, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to section... May I borrow yours?
No, it's working now.
We're good now? Okay. I move for the purpose of taking, for the move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code, for the purpose of consideration of employment or compensation of a public employee or official.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go to executive session. I need a roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Duer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Littrell.
Yes.
Mayor Adams.
Yes, and there will be no decision coming out of this, so effectively, when we're finished, we'll come out and adjourn. So effectively, the meeting is over.